Good evening. Welcome to the special Fall Town Meeting with the Town of Tingsborough, October 24th, In the absence of our elected town moderator, we need to appoint a temporary town moderator for this evening's meeting. I will accept nominations.
I nominate Bill Graemer.
Hearing a nomination for Bill Graemer, I need a second.
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 The nomination has been approved, has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, Bill Graemer has been elected as a temporary town moderator for the Town of Tingsborough. Thank you. And I will now proceed to swear in Mr. Graemer. If you would like to raise your right hand. I, Bill Graemer, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties incumbent upon me as town moderator for the Town of Tingsborough according to the best of my ability and understanding, agreeably to the rules and regulations of the Constitution and the laws of the Commonwealth, so help me God.
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Well, thank you for that. Good evening, everybody. Before we start, if you'd like to, please join me in reciting our Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And also, before we start tonight, I'd like to recognize someone in our town who is absent this evening. It's the first time in 47 years that Gus Skamoritz will not be with us for a town meeting. He's got some lingering health issues that prevented him from being here tonight, but I'd ask everyone to please join me in a moment of silence to wish him the best. Thank you. And a few housekeeping items. We have 10 articles tonight. You can follow along in our town meeting guidebook, which was available when you checked in. There's also some QR codes you can scan with your phone. They're out in the hallway as well. You can follow along on your device. On the stage this evening, we have our Finance Committee and we have our Select Board along with our Town Manager, Town Clerk, and Town Council. For each article, I'll ask that there be a motion and a second. If it's moved to a vote, there'll be an explanation by our Select Board, and then we'll invite folks to come up to the microphone, if you'd like, for a discussion. Just identify yourself by your name and your address before you speak. And also be sure to direct your comments and questions through the moderator. After discussion, we'll call for a voice vote. Most articles need only a simple majority. There are two tonight that require, one requires a two-thirds, the other a nine-tenths vote, in which case we may do a hand count. And each of you should have your orange card when you checked in. And if it requires a hand count, we'll ask you to hold them up. We'll do the ayes and the nays separately, and we may ask for some volunteers to help Next up, do I have a motion to allow non-residents to speak?
So moved.
Let me identify by name.
You have a second.
Yep. So the motion would be to allow the following individuals, non-residents, to speak. Colin Loizell, Town Manager; Catherine Foster, Assistant Town Manager; Attorney Adam Costa, Town Council; Richard Howe, Police Chief; Bonnie Murray, Assistant Communication Supervisor; David Andrus, Finance Director and Town Accountant; Eric Salerno, Town Planner and Economic Development Director; Ronnie Camille, our Media Director; Mike Woodlock, Assistant School Superintendent; Chris Pollitt, Middle School Principal; Dominic Semantelli, Director of Facilities and Grounds; David Sandin from Left Field; Doug Roberts from J C J Architecture; Rob Day from Fontaine Brothers; Chad Lequy from Fontaine Brothers; and David Fontaine Jr., also from Fontaine Brothers. I have a motion and a second on those individuals. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That does carry unanimously. Article 1, Citizens' Petition to See If the Town Will Vote to Require Any Warrant Article That Will Require or Impose an Increase to Real Estate Taxes Must Be Voted by Ballot During a General Town General Election and Not During an Annual or Special Town Meeting Vote Unless a Quorum Exists With a Minimum of 25% of Tingsborough Registered Voters. Do I have a motion on Article 1? Motion, do I have a second? Motion and a second, explanation?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. The Town of Tingsborough does not provide explanations for citizens' petitions. However, Town Council has reviewed the language of the article and believes that this article is unlawful and will not pass legal review of the Attorney General. With your permission, I'd like to see if Town Council could provide further explanation.
Yes, Town Council.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Moderator. So, as stated by the previous speaker, as is routine with any warrant article, whether it's an article proposed by the Select Board or articles proposed by citizens' petitioners, they make their way to my desk and I review them for legality and to determine whether they are lawful and will pass muster when sent along to the Attorney General's office. I generally offer an opinion as to whether they're lawful, unlawful, or advisory in nature. When I received Article 1, I did a review, quite a bit of extensive research, given some of the unusual components of this particular article. And I came to the conclusion, and I advised the Town Manager and the Select Board, that I believe Article 1 as drafted and as presented to town meeting is unlawful. My concern is twofold. The first is it attempts to take the authority to approve appropriations from this body and place it into the hands of voters at an election through a ballot process. The problem with that is that by state law, appropriations are within the purview and the authority of town meeting, and there is no statutory authority to defer that power to voters at a ballot. In fact, there's contradictory state authority that says that it is the sole purview of the town meeting to perform that function as a legislative body of the town. The second concern I had was with respect to this concept of what I refer to as sort of a super quorum, a quorum that is comprised of more than, in the case of this particular article, 25% of registered voters in the Town of Tingsborough. And my concern there was that there is law that allows for a quorum to be set for town meetings generally, but there is no state law that allows for different quorums to be established for different articles within the same town meeting. In an abundance of caution, since my initial opinion to the Town Manager, I did consult with both the Secretary of the Commonwealth and also consulted with the Attorney General's Office. And while, as you might imagine, neither of them would go on record with any particular opinion, considering that there's been no action yet on the article, I got a general consensus from both of those offices that my opinion was accurate and that these are unlikely to pass muster if the town meeting were to take action to approve them. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, thank you for that. Any further discussion on Article 1?
John Murphy, 61 Ting Road. I'd like to amend the language in Article 1. The language I'd like to see, which I've presented to the Board prior to this meeting, is to be as follows. To see if the Town of Tingsborough will, notwithstanding any other general or special law or regulation to the contrary, vote to require that any warrant article presented at annual town meeting or special town meeting that will require or has the potential to impose an increase to real estate taxes, like agreements to guarantee funding, must follow the appropriate measures as specified in Proposition 2 and 1/2.
Okay, so there's a proposed amendment. Do I have a second on the motion to amend?
Second.
Okay, there is a second. Mr. Murphy, so I just want to respond to you and let you know that I did receive an email this morning with the proposed amendment, so that I could review it in the event I was moderator tonight. My concern is that the original article, as it was posted, differs from what you've proposed now, and the amendment can or cannot go outside the scope of the original posted article. The moderator's role is to make sure that the folks voting tonight have a chance to review that article and understand what it is they're voting on. And the way I read this, it seems to go outside the four corners. But I'd like Town Council to also weigh in on that for the benefit of everyone here tonight.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. So yes, we did have the benefit of receiving the proposed amendment in advance, and certainly we appreciate that. It gives us an opportunity to evaluate it and not have to make decisions in the fly that may or may not be right, not having had the opportunity to research the issue. I've consulted with the moderator. I concur. The concern with respect to amendments to warrant articles is that those amendments must be, and this is not the legal terminology, but it's the practical terminology we use, they have to be within the four corners or the scope of the article as printed in the warrant. So you have to put yourself, I put myself as council, in the position of an individual who might be at home, read the warrant, and make a determination as to whether they're going to come to town meeting to vote based upon what they read in a particular warrant article. They have to be on notice of what could be discussed at town meeting. And I share the moderator's concern in this instance, that there are significant changes from the original warrant article to eliminate this concept again of a super quorum and to replace this idea of a deferral to the general election with reference to the Proposition 2 and 1/2 process, which is a rather complex process that involves the Select Board in referring to town meeting a particular article, action by town meeting, and then dual action, not just by town meeting, but also by the voters at the ballot box. So it's a very different process even than what was in the original warrant article. So I share the same concern, that it's quite possible an individual might have reviewed this article as written in the warrant and decided not to participate in town meeting, not aware that it would change this substantively. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Town Council. Go ahead.
Mr. Moderator, I'd just like to also add to that, that the response back initially from the Board as we were presenting these was that it was illegal, which would also hinder people from coming to the town meeting. I'd like the town to actually have an opportunity to vote on this. And to me, it is within the four corners of the original discussion, because it has to do with real estate taxes specifically. That's where this differs from the second article that's in here. It's all specifically to deal with real estate taxes, which are governed by Proposition 2 and 1/2. So I wanted to specify that and make that clear, which is still within the original article. So I'd like the people to consider that and, you know, put it to the town to see if they want to vote on it. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. Any further discussion on the amendment that's being proposed? Mr. Crawford?
Amendment?
On the amendment. Okay. So respectfully, Mr. Murphy, I am going to find that this is outside the scope of the article as it was posted. So I am going to reject the proposed amendment. That leaves Article 1 still on the floor as printed. There is a motion and a second. We can have further discussion on Article 1 as printed. Mr. Crawford?
How do you know who I am? Billy Crawford, 83 Frost Road. Here's the thing. This is a special town meeting. Is that not correct?
That's correct.
Please, next time we have a sign, just don't just put "Fall." This is a special town meeting. And that's really relevant. Here's why. Over 100 people had to sign the petition to have this article before you. The Springtown meeting, does anybody know how many it takes in Springtown meeting? 10. Okay, so this huge, big difference. This is a special town meeting for a reason, okay? Not obligations placed on us, all right? The Select Board or the school committee can have almost any article they want. All the Select Board has to do is to say yes. They didn't have to get 100 signatures, okay? And if this article, nobody here was a judge, nobody here is a judge that I know of. I heard the opinions, and we know how, there's a lot of opinions about a lot of things. But if this article passed here, and it didn't pass muster at the courts, then it doesn't go into law anyway. So you can say it's illegal, but it's not illegal for us to vote the way we want to vote, is it?
No, it's not. That wasn't my understanding. Thank you. You just need to understand the consequences of the vote, is all. So Council's made that clear, what may or may not happen at the Attorney General's office. But we'll certainly vote on Article 1 as printed.
I understand what you just said, sir, and I was disappointed that the Select Board weighed in how they felt about this before this meeting. It's very rare that a Select Board says anything about a citizen petition. Very disappointed, guys, that you did that.
All right, any further discussion on Article 1?
Mr. Moderator?
If I may respond to that.
Sure.
There are going to be instances where there are citizens' petitions or other things that come before the Board, where they are so blatantly different than either state law or what is part of Tingsborough, that it's incumbent upon us to vote on that and make recommendations. I know Mr. Crawford voted on citizens' petitions when he was on the Finance Committee, even though they weren't finance-related. So there is certainly precedent for it, and even if it weren't the case, regardless of tradition, I know for me, and I voted on this and I voted to not recommend this, because it basically, it effectively removes town meeting from what we're doing. So all the things that you folks are here for, it removes that. And it's fundamental to not only this town, but all the towns in the state. And so that's why I know I voted on it. I'll let the other members say what they feel.
I'm just going to beg to differ, Mr. Moderator, if you don't mind.
Go ahead, name an address.
Sorry, Heather Murphy, 61 Ting Road.
Go ahead.
I'm going to differ with what Eric just said. Unfortunately, it's not, it's not going to change every town meeting. It's going to change things that impact our taxes. When things come up that are going to increase taxes by a significant amount of money, we have an opportunity as voters to make those opinions of our own in those opportunities where we're given ballot. That's my point.
Thank you for that. Further discussion?
Karen Kavanaugh, 12 Skyline. I just have two questions. If this were to pass, do we have to hold a ballot vote? Are we required to hold the ballot vote if this article passes? And...
A ballot vote to approve it if it were approved tonight?
To approve this, any of these kinds of articles. So anytime something comes up where our taxes would increase, we would have to hold the ballot vote?
I'll defer to Council on that.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. So the way that I read the article, and I don't want to certainly speak for the citizen petitioners, but the way that I read the article, it provides options. In the event that there is a warrant article that will result in an increase to real estate taxes, one of two things will have to happen. Either it will be voted at a ballot during a general election, or there would need to be a super quorum, to use the term that I coined before, quorum comprised of a minimum of 25% of Tingsborough registered voters that would be present at the town meeting at which that was approved. So one of those two things would need to occur.
So no special cost needs to be incurred to have this vote? It would become part of a general vote? My understanding is if you vote by ballot, that's a cost to the town to make that happen. So I'm just wondering, every time this happens, do we have to incur a cost to have that vote? But you're saying it would become part of a general...
Through you, Mr. Moderator. So I'm just referring to the language of the petition as drafted by the petitioners, and the language says, and I'm just going to quote it as it's in front of me, "must be voted by ballot during a town general election." That's how the petition has been structured. So that would indicate that it would occur during a town general election and not during a special election, not at any other time, during a town general election, unless that super quorum existed at the annual or special town meeting at which the appropriation was made.
And those happen every year?
Town election?
We have a town election every year.
We have one every year. Okay, thank you.
Did you have a second question? No. Okay. Any further discussion on Article 1?
Thelma Riley, 18 Patoka Boulevard. I think when you're talking a lot of money and you have a town meeting like this, and you don't get enough people here to do a quorum, then the decisions on spending money is just a few people that can absolutely make it that particular night. This gives it more fair, that we get more people to come out and vote on something yes or no, rather than a small amount of people making a very large decision when it comes to our tax dollars for all of us.
Thank you for that. Any further discussion?
Jerry Scrooge, 4 Word Road. I just have a question. At normal town meetings, special meetings or voting, do we ever get 25%? So if we never get 25%, it would always have to go to a ballot. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any further discussion on Article 1 as printed? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 1 as printed signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
That does not carry. Article 2, Citizens' Petition to See If the Town Will Vote to Require Any Project in Excess of $1 Million Must Be Approved by Ballot During a Town General Election and Not During an Annual or Special Town Meeting Unless a Quorum Exists With a Minimum of 25% of Tingsborough Registered Voters. Do I have a motion on Article 2? Motion, do I have a second? Motion and a second. An explanation?
Mr. Moderator, the Town of Tingsborough does not provide explanations for citizens' petitions. However, Town Council has reviewed the language of the article and believes that this article is unlawful and will not pass legal review of the Attorney General. And I will ask our lawyer if he would like to add anything else to that.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So I won't belabor the points, but as you can see from the text of this article, it's structured much the same way procedurally as the previous article, and so my opinion was the same, that it attempts to defer a legislative function to the voters at a ballot, which is not permissible under state law, and similarly requires a super quorum, a 25% of Tingsborough registered voters' quorum for certain articles and not for all articles at a town meeting, which is also inconsistent with state statute. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article 2?
As previously stated, I made a motion earlier. I set amended language, which I'd like to make a motion now to amend the language of Article 2, to be as follows. To see if the Town of Tingsborough will, notwithstanding any other general or special law or regulation to the contrary, vote to require that any warrant article presented at annual town meeting or special town meeting that is not considered part of the normal operational budget for the town and a cost exceeding $1 million that gathers a majority of town meeting participant votes must also be approved by a general election ballot unless a quorum exists at that meeting of at least 20% registered voters.
So I have a motion to amend. Is there a second on the motion to amend? Motion is second. So again, Mr. Murphy, same concerns with this proposed amendment on Article 2 that I had with Article 1. I think Town Council would have the same concerns, but you want to go ahead and respond as well?
That's correct, Mr. Moderator. So same concerns. Obviously, the nature of this proposed amendment is slightly different in terms of what it does to the structure of Article 2 as opposed to the amendment that was proposed to Article 1. But I concur with the moderator that it is outside the scope. It replaces what was an either/or, either a vote at a general election or a vote at a town meeting with a super quorum. It converts that to now sort of a dual vote, initially a vote at town meeting, and if there's a majority at town meeting, then it would proceed to the general election unless there's a 20% different from the 25%, 20% of Tingsborough registered voters in attendance at the town meeting. So again, different in scope, different in structure than the original version of Article 2 in your warrant, and so I have similar concerns relative to scope and it being within the four corners of what voters were put on notice of. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Anything further?
This one here, I think, is much closer to the, it's within the 100% of the spirit of what the question was that's on the ballot, where the first one, I didn't mention the Prop 2 and 1/2, and I clarified that to make that more clear. This one here is directly within the spirit in the letter of what that first Article 2 is all about. It's all about projects that get presented here at special town meeting or annual town meeting that are over $1 million. The one specific change I made to that was 20%, which is what we generally have for a general election, as opposed to the 25, which we haven't had from the general election to make that more palatable there. It's still the spirit, and the action for Article 2 is still the same. Now, is the warrant article legal? The Attorney General, by action or inaction, ultimately decides the legality of proposed warrant articles. That's under Mass. General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 32. One lawyer's private opinion does not constitute this warrant article's ultimate legality. Article 2, Section 1 of the Massachusetts Constitution reaffirms "the customary and traditional liberties of the people with respect to the conduct of their local government and to grant and confirm to the people of every city and town the right of self-government in local matters." We, the people, are in control of how we govern ourselves. We need to remember that. The Town of Tingsborough doesn't have a charter. It's governed by an amalgamation of the Massachusetts Constitution, the town's independent bylaws, and subject to the general laws that are applicable to all towns. The town meeting venue is intended to have a town meet, deliberate, act, and vote in the exercise of corporate powers of the town. Our town meeting vote is what provides the town administration the right to operate in our interests. That's in Mass. General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 4. We, as a town, authorize our administrators specific powers to act on our behalf each year, the most important of which is the ability for our elected officials to enter contracts as authorized by town meeting. That's the same thing in Mass. General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 4. This is what we do when we appropriate money to the town's operational budget. That's Mass. General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 5. However, there's nothing that prevents us providing terms or more restrictive measures for certain items, like requiring a general election ballot for spending conditions presented in this warrant article, so long as it's not inconsistent with any applicable provision or any general or special law. That's the same thing, Mass. General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 5. The concept of imposing additional restrictions as prescribed in this warrant article isn't inconsistent with the current body of laws. There's nothing in Massachusetts Constitution, nor the Mass. General Laws, nor our Tingsborough bylaws that say a town cannot require certain expenditures to follow a more stringent approval process. And according with Mass. General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 21, the town may make such ordinances and bylaws not repugnant to law as they may judge most conducive to their welfare. In fact, there's even language in the town meeting's definitions to provide for other matters that are to be determined by ballot. There are also current laws that provide ability to prescribe the number of voters necessary to constitute a quorum, a town meeting. That's in Mass. General Laws, Chapter 39, Section 13. Plus, there are laws within the Mass. General Laws to reprobate a prior town meeting vote and force a general election vote. That's in Mass. General Laws, Chapter 43A, Section 10. So we can surely determine that significant matters of great interest should be decided by a general town ballot to better reflect the will and the intent of Tingsborough residents. We have over 9,700 Tingsborough residents, but very few generally attend annual town meetings, even less at the special town meetings. Why people don't attend is anyone's guess. But, excuse me, the town follows the legal notice requirements. I'm not sure if that's enough, but we do that. But my issue is that there are some very important decisions made at town meetings, yet they are woefully attended by about 300 voters, or 3% of the population, but registered voters. And as such, it only takes about 151 voters to commit the town to millions of dollars in debt and decide the town's financial future. That's scary. It seems whoever has an agenda just needs to line up a relatively small group of people who support the measure, to attend the meeting, be loud, shout down opposition, and overwhelm the remaining attendees into compliance. We felt that during past articles for voter ID and mail-in voting. We also saw that when calling for fiscal constraints on the TMS project vote initially. The few people that do come down to town meetings can be bullied into quiet submission by fear of reprisal from a boisterous crowd. We should recognize the intent of more Tingsborough voters and residents when it comes to making these important decisions. We typically have over 20% at the ballot box. Let's use that forum to hear and better represent our community. Thank you.
Thank you for that. So further discussion on the amendment first? Any discussion on just the proposed amendment before... Sure, go ahead.
Mike Roach, 6 Dashon Lane. Just for clarification, what constitutes a Prop 2 and 1/2 ballot recommendation?
Again, I'll defer to Town Council on that.
So through you, Mr. Mo-
So through you, Mr. Moderator. So there's nothing in this particular article. There was a reference in the proposed amendment to Article One to Proposition Two and a Half. The proposed amendment to Article Two, as I have it in my notes, my email from earlier today, and what I think was read tonight, there is no reference to Prop Two and a Half. The amendment is simply replacing what was originally read as Article Two in what you might see in your warrant booklets with a slightly different version that would require, with respect to any project in excess of $1 million that gathers a majority vote at town meeting, would require that to be approved at a general election unless that town meeting happened to have 20% of the registered voters in the town of Tingsborough in attendance.
Yep. Just to put it for perspective, for the citizens, if it was like police cars or fire trucks that we had to purchase, that could go to like a Prop Two and a Half type of vote. So we could potentially vote on getting new police cars or fire trucks through a ballot, but not a million dollars according to what you're saying tonight.
Through you, Mr. Moderator.
Go ahead.
So I can attempt to respond to that. So Proposition Two and a Half is a state law that is utilized to exceed your levy limit. If you exceed your levy limit by more than 2.5% over the prior year's levy limit, you're required to go to the ballot box to get a vote of registered voters in your community to authorize that excess. You can do it either to change the levy limit altogether, which would establish a new basis for future years, or you can do it in the form of what you probably heard referred to as a debt exclusion, which is for a one-time project. And once that project is paid off, then that amount comes off the books, more or less. So you are correct that sometimes for larger projects, whether they be school projects or public safety buildings or vehicles, in the event that the costs exceed the amount available to the town to stay within its levy limit, the town would proceed either to increase its levy limit through an override or to go the route of a debt exclusion, either way, under Proposition Two and a Half.
And could we do this motion by hand ballot versus voice?
Well, we'll see.
Okay.
All right. So with respect to the amendment, Mr. Murphy, I am going to reject the proposed amendment as well. The issue for me is whether a voter would reasonably know that the article as you've proposed to have it amended would be discussed tonight. And I think it's outside the scope of what's already been posted in the warrant for the town voters to review. So that leaves us with Article Two as printed. Is there any further discussion on Article Two as printed?
Billy Crawford, Eighty-three Frost Road. First of all, I'd like to thank Chair Eldridge for his heartfelt explanation. I understood what you said. Don't agree with it, but I understood what he said. Once again, same issue. Hundred people, over 100 people, sign this petition. So at least over more than 100 people in this community that sees this as an issue. We have this municipality. We have the schools. It seems like they can bring almost anything they want, and they can promote it within the monies that we provide at town halls and at the schools. They have the internet. They have a list of... They have all the tools to bring and do almost anything they want to do. So that's kind of what this is about, is some of us feel like we're not counted. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article Two?
John Murphy, again, just in case people forgot. I still think, just so everyone knows, and it's clear to everyone else in the room, Article Two, the way it was originally written, still passes muster and still would pass if it gets to the Attorney General for all the reasons I stated when I was trying to put the modified language in. So all that still stands, and if people vote this in, I do believe that we do have the power to do so, and that it will pass muster with the Attorney General.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, let's move it to a vote. All those in favor of Article Two as printed, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
That does not carry. So you need to make a motion to reconsider. State the basis for your motion as well.
Because some people are louder than others, and I want to make sure that we're getting the right count.
Well, so...
Which is exactly...
I was just from last time.
This is exactly my whole point with bringing this up in the first place.
Mr. Murphy, hang on, hang on.
Oh, you asked me what the question was. There are people that aren't as loud, and they're not as going to be as vocal, but they would vote for this.
Standing here, I can hear quite clearly.
How about raising hands and raising...
Different from you. That motion did not carry. Article Three. Article Three, to see if the town will vote to maintain Tingsborough Emergency Dispatch local within Tingsborough and not move to Tewksbury's regional center. Do I have a motion on Article Three? This is also a citizens' petition. Folks, it's my call. As the moderator, I clearly heard in excess of a majority of vote of no votes. It was not even close. It was not close. Article Three, do I have a motion on Article Three?
Motion.
Motion. Do I have a second on Article Three?
Second.
Motion and a second. Explanation?
Mr. Moderator, the Select Board heard public comment on this matter at their meeting on September 18. The feedback included questions and concerns that the Board felt were important to further explore. On October 3, the Select Board, Police Chief Richard Howe and Fire Chief Wes Russell issued a joint statement indicating that additional public engagement would be required before the town could consider moving forward. That engagement will involve public safety personnel, public safety administration, and the general public. We know this process will take time, and no imminent decision on this matter is pending. The Select Board welcomes public feedback tonight and will host future public meetings where the focus is solely on the future prospects of regional dispatch. A copy of the joint statement is on that screen.
So a motion and a second. Explanation. Any further explanation? Further discussion? Go ahead.
Yes, my name is Bonnie Murray. This is Kim Demarest. She is a resident of town. I'm the Assistant Communications Director in Tingsborough, and I've just come here tonight because I wanted to say thank you to a few people. It's been a rough couple of months, but we made it through. I want to thank the Board and the moderator and the town manager for allowing me to speak tonight. The Communications Department would like to thank the town, the town manager, and the Select Board. We would also like to thank the Select Board for listening to the knowledgeable people who have spoken in favor of keeping communications here in Tingsborough. In particular, we would like to thank Chief Howe, Deputy Chief Woods, members of the NEPBA Local AA and B, which is the Supervisors and Patrolmen's Union, and for providing that information to you. Communications would like to thank the residents of Tingsborough. Thank you very much for the time and effort they put in to get this petition to the town for signatures and on the special town meeting agenda so quickly. At this time, it is our understanding that the Select Board and town manager have decided to end discussions on the regionalization of Tingsborough Communications with the Tewksbury NIMRE, but may bring the discussion of regionalization back at a later date. We do want to recognize that we do recognize that this is a legitimate issue and look forward to an open dialogue about what is the best course of action for the town of Tingsborough and the Communications Department here at Tingsborough. Again, residents, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article Three?
Yeah, John Murphy, Sixty-one Ting Road, same as before. When this was originally presented to the Board, the initial response back was this would only be a non-binding referendum if it was permitted here at town meeting. I want to address that and say that the ability for town administrators and departments to engage in contracts for the town of Tingsborough derives from Mass. General Law, Chapter Forty, Section Four, as authorized by the town meeting in a town, which is here. So, or otherwise authorized in accordance with the duly adopted charter, which we do not have. So as such, we have the authority to demand that one of our town functions, specifically the Emergency Dispatch Center, is to remain within the town of Tingsborough. In doing so, we remove that authority from any of the town's administrative officers and departments and require a vote at a subsequent town meeting to modify that decision. The Emergency Dispatch team provides a unique service to Tingsborough. Its members maintain particular certifications, which enable them to work closely with our police and fire departments. They provide exemplary comfort and service to the community and possess intrinsic knowledge of our town and its landmarks that can help save lives. Losing a local dispatch presents the risk to the community, and if lost, cannot easily be replaced and is likely to be gone forever. It's an important enough decision that can and should be left up to Tingsborough residents to decide. So we can decide that here tonight, that regardless of what the town wants to do in the future, whether it's a regional dispatch, it would need to stay in Tingsborough, or the Emergency Dispatch itself has to stay local. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article Three? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Three signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That one was close, folks. So we'll go to the hand count on that. So what we're going to do is take out your orange card. I'm going to ask you to hold up your card. I can get a few volunteers to count. Ron? I need four volunteers, folks. Two on each side would help. Come on up. One more on the right side. Karen, thank you. What? Okay, sure. So a yes vote, folks, would approve this petition, which asks that the town of Tingsborough maintain the Emergency Dispatch within Tingsborough and not move it to a Tewksbury Regional Center. So that's what a yes vote would do. You would want... You'd be voting in favor of maintaining the dispatch within Tingsborough and not moving it. If you voted no, you would leave it as is. You would leave the issue to be determined at a later date, essentially. Yeah, okay. Any questions on that? Go ahead.
A no vote here means that you can still lose dispatch, and it doesn't have to be decided at a town meeting. That means that the police chief and the fire chief or the Board can decide to contract with a different dispatch center and move Emergency Dispatch out. We got over 340, close to 340 signatures to discuss that here tonight and to get a ballot initiative so that we can make that determination ourselves. If we vote no tonight, we lose that. So you have the possibility that tomorrow, a new contract can come up and dispatch is moved. That's what this is all about. So I wouldn't, as much as I appreciate the letter that we got from the police chief and the fire chief saying that they're going to look into this further, that's well and good, but we have enough people here tonight that we should be able to vote and make sure that we maintain it here and keep that here. Otherwise, we do lose that, and we could lose it tomorrow. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator?
If we're going to reopen the discussion, I think we might want to just clarify some of those statements.
I agree. I think we could, either you or Chief could address whether, what the status is of the discussions by the Select Board.
Yeah, thank you. I think, as stated in the joint statement, there is nothing imminent. We will be working with all the stakeholders, dispatch, public safety folks. You know, we listen to the professionals. Perhaps Chief Howe, if you wanted to come up and provide a little bit more clarification. But there is nothing imminent at this point.
Good evening, everyone. Rich Howe, Police Chief. So, you know, obviously, we really appreciate all the support for the Police Department, and we have the utmost respect for everyone here, the Board members. This has been an issue. I've been in chief since 2013. Tingsborough itself has been, with NIMCOG, in the development of regional dispatch going back to 2007. This is nothing new. Most communities are in some type of process, whether or not they're looking at it long-term. They're looking at it from different angles, whether they're going to host or whether they're going to go to a regional eventually. This is something that the state pushes on a regular basis with communities. There's financial incentives. The problem with any kind of resolution that says, you know, we just can't look at regional dispatch is that it's really not practical, because as we sit here tonight, we've all agreed, the Board members, the administration of the Police Department and Fire Department, we're in agreement that we're not moving forward with Tewksbury. In order for us to look at it at all, or determine that we're not going to look at it in the future, we have to have a process. The process would be applying for grants through the state. The process would be forming committees, looking at the pros and cons, and yes, bringing it to the community, perhaps in this type of form, would be an eventuality. To say that we cannot look at it at all, I believe ties our hands, does something that we should not want to do. I think it's an advantage for the town to have it open, an open-ended question, whether or not we're going to do it in the short term. It's not going to be done in the short term. Tewksbury is closed. We are not applying for this grant. Three, four years from now, we may be looking at trying to build a public safety building. We may be looking at an opportunity somewhere else who is building a new regional that the town and our dispatchers and our staff may decide that it is in the best interest for the town of Tingsborough to move to. So I fully support the viewpoint of what we're doing tonight, not moving forward with Tewksbury. I also support the ability to, and the necessary ability, for the town to have that as an open option, to look at all of our options in the future. Thank you.
Further discussion on Article Three?
Kim Rouse, Sixteen Michigan Road. I just wanted to clarify. The article as written specifies Tewksbury. So if I vote yes, I'm saying we want Tewksbury off the table, which sounds like it already is. But I can't necessarily vote yes or no if it's just in general, but the article as written specifies Tewksbury.
Correct. Further discussion on Article Three? Go ahead, sir.
Donald Persons, Twenty Centre Crest Drive. I'm understanding correctly that currently the authority lies with the Select Board. That's the issue that I see is the main issue for this article. Am I understanding that correctly? Whether this is approved or not, I'd like to commend the thought to emergency preparedness. I'm an Eagle Scout, and I believe in being prepared, and I think that there will be greater challenges in emergency dispatch and emergency and crisis coordination in the coming five to 10 years. So I think that this will expand in a need, and we should give some thought to things like natural catastrophes that will occur in the future here. So, as well as an aging population, there are more and more people, the boomers are dying off, and there will be dispatch for that as well. So I think there's a number of things that I would commend to give consideration in a more thorough way. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Al Stamp, Thirty Willedale Ave. Just wanted to get... Probably the wrong person to get up here, because I actually work underneath an organization that goes through NIMRE currently. Great organization. They're still going through some growth pains, so you guys are making the right decision at this point not to engage. I think they're doing the best they can. The one thing that I think there's a sentiment going around in here that I don't think a lot of people are paying attention to is the citizens want a voice in the investment in this town. I think before we look outside to improve dispatch, I think we do have a great dispatch group here. I think the focus should be growing your emergency services right now. I think your minimal investment in your fire department right now, where you have a town that's separated by a bridge, and you have a fire department on one side of that bridge. That bridge goes out. You guys aren't prepared for that. But you have a dispatch group that actually knows what happens on both sides of that bridge. So I would implore this town to really be looking more at their public safety as a center instead of reaching out to other grants and things like that. I know the chief pointed out, state monies that exist for these dispatch centers, they're not forever. You'll get state monies to get engaged into a regional dispatch center, and technology changes, changes all the time. And when that happens, it comes back in here, and we're the ones that have to pay for it. So before you start putting things off remote away from this town, understand that if you have to invest in it, it's going to be that much more expensive to make it robust to support these citizens. So I would really hope that this town takes a real close look at your investment in your public safety buildings, full-time staff, and coverage on both sides of that bridge. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.[599.48][599.48](applause) Any further discussion? Quickly.
Yeah, I just wanna clarify still that, just 'cause it seemed like that last couple, two questions ago was focusing on just the Tuxbury Regional Center. The vote today requires it to stay local within Tingsboro. It's not just about the Tuxbury Regional Center. That was a specific example in this, and we can put the question to the town attorney as well. There's an "and" in there. So it is, it's to maintain Tingsboro's emergency dispatch local within Tingsboro. And then the other part was the Tuxbury Regional Center, which seems to be being taken off the table anyway. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just because Mr. Murphy asked, perhaps counsel could weigh in on that and one of the other questions that came up there.
Sure. So through you, Mr. Moderator. So, so yes, I mean, I can't speak to the intent of the citizens' petitioners because I didn't draft the article, but the way that I read it, it does say, to see if the town will vote to maintain Tingsboro's emergency dispatch local within Tingsboro and not move to Tuxbury's regional center. So I do view that as being a two-part vote, a single vote that accomplishes two things. It expresses the will of the, of the voters to maintain Tingsboro's emergency dispatch local in town, and number two, to not move to Tuxbury's regional center. That is how I, how I read that. Was there a second question that, that you were referring me to as well, or is that it?
No, I think that was it. And then there was an earlier question whether the, who has authority on that? There was discussion that it's select board, and, you know, certainly, we're gonna make decisions based on feedback from the town, but ultimately, authority and where those contracts and those types of activities occur.
Sure. So again, through you, Mr. Moderator. So I think I differ with the, the previous speaker in terms of the authority of the select board versus the authority of town meeting. I do appreciate that there are references in Massachusetts general laws to certain authorization through town meeting of certain types of contracts. Regional dispatch centers are unique in the sense that they're governed by a specific statute in Massachusetts. Chapter 6A, Section 18A governs regional dispatch centers. It relates to their creation, to their operation amongst multiple municipalities, and there's no reference anywhere in those sections to town meeting action being required. It speaks of the chief executive official of the municipality, which in a city is typically the mayor or the city council, usually the mayor, and in a town is the select board. So I would say that this authority falls to the select board and not, not to town meeting. But, but that's, again, that's my, my legal position. I have not, I've not consulted with the Attorney General's Office on this particular article.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion on Article 3?
Thelma Riley, 18 Bataca Boulevard. I was at the meeting in the selectman's office where it was full, absolutely full, of policemen, firemen, and citizens, and the majority of these people were against it being moved. I find it insulting that it wasn't taken into consideration that you had a majority of people not wanting it, and yet you continue to do what you want as always.[820.01][820.01](applause)
Further discussion? Chief?
Rich Howe, Police Chief. I just, I have to respond to that. I, all due respect, that's the very reason the letter was written as it was. This is a group of professionals, the fire chief's sitting behind me with 35-plus years' experience. I'm 32-years-plus experience, 11 years as chief here. These board members are doing what they're actually supposed to do, look for the best fiscal, fiscally responsible ways to spend the town's money. With that said, our job is to also point out what we see as pros and cons to whatever that is. This situation is regional dispatch. Professionals, we can, as professionals, we can disagree and agree on certain things. There were some, definitely some disagreements with this, but the one thing that we came out with is after that meeting, and to the previous speaker's point, from that meeting, the town heard it loud and clear of where many of our residents stand. Certainly, we know, I know, where our people stand. This is an issue that is not going away, not because of the, the five members of the Board of Selectmen. This is an issue because it's a regional Massachusetts issue that we're going to have to practically deal with, and we're going to do that in a professional way. With that said, they did listen. That's why the letter was written. That's why we agreed. We would, we agreed to pause this current process. We agreed not to go forward with this current contract and grant with Tuxbury. We are not going forward. That does not say that we should not go forward and look at the potentials of other dispatch regionals in the future, whether that's two years from now or four years from now or, or more. We can't tie our hands and not have any ability to improve public safety, to improve, you know, there's things down the road that we don't know what's coming. And there's nobody in this room that's agreeing that we're doing this, but we're sitting here tonight, and that's why that letter, it's not up there anymore, was written to address that. They listened loud and clear. We certainly listened loud and clear. I think Chief Russell behind me is gonna reiterate a lot of what I'm saying, but it is not accurate to state that the board just decided to bring this forward. A motion was brought forward, it's here, and we have to, we have to address it tonight.[985.23][985.23](applause)
Thank you, Chief. Further discussion? Chief Russell?
Wes Russell, 187 Kendall Road, Fire Chief. And firstly, I have immense appreciation for our public safety dispatches. You know, we do have some fantastic dispatches, and we certainly wanna hang on to them. One, I wanted to just reiterate, you know, Chief Howe spoke eloquently, but we did, you know, listen to the dispatchers and communicate with them regularly and made the determination. Chief Howe and I, together with the town manager, agreed that this was not the direction to go for the town, and we did not move forward. And I think that we also realize that we can come up with a better process for moving, for moving forward and evaluating how our communications center is done in town. Maybe keeping it in town in perpetuity is the right thing to do. We have to look at a lot of factors. The 911 communications grant situation is diminishing for towns like ours and increasing for regionals. That's one reason why this was looked at to begin with. I can promise you that, you know, Chief Howe and I have made a decision that we're gonna move forward and keep an open mind, communicate with the communications specialists as well, make them part of the process, and evaluate all factors. And I just think that this would be the wrong time to tie our hands from anything moving forward. Thank you.[1079.11][1079.11](applause)
One more. Go ahead.
Kyle Lynn Wright, Nottingham Road. So my question is, like, how long would this, if it votes yes, how long does that impact us for, right, as a town? Right now, it's saying Tuxbury on there, and as the chief of police said, that's not an option. So if we vote yes to keep it locally as the time period, and Tuxbury's not the option when the right option does occur or come up, I don't know why we would tie our hands without a regional option if the answer's not Tuxbury anyways. Can't we continue to look at those options moving forward, and then whenever the regional option is, is appropriate, we can vote on it at that time? I don't know why this one vote now would stop it forever.
Thank you. So question is, if this passes tonight and passes review by the Attorney General's Office, how long is it in effect? Does town council have a thought on that?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
So there's obviously no time, no timetable or time limit incorporated into the petition itself. Again, as I indicated before, I believe statute controls, so I don't believe necessarily that the effect of Article 3 is to tie the hands of the select board necessarily, certainly not for any specific period of time. But again, that will be left to the Attorney General to decide otherwise if that's not the case.
Thank you for that. So last, last comment, Mr. Murphy, and then we're gonna do a count.
I just wanna add to that, 'cause he's right, with, there's no timeframe associated with it. Built into that, it would become part of the bylaw of Tingsboro, that the, the dispatch has to stay here. So in order for it to move outside of Tingsboro would require, I believe, a three-quarter vote at town hall, at town meeting. To be reconsidered. You'd have to reconsider this, this, this bylaw at town meeting.
All right. I'm gonna ask town council just to comment on that, because I don't know that it actually amends the town bylaws.
No, and that's correct. Through you, Mr. Moderator. So this is not a bylaw amendment. Bylaw amendments follow a particular form, and again, you all have Article 3 before you. It does not propose an amendment to the bylaw, so this language would not become part of any bylaw in the town of Tingsboro.
All right, thank you. All right, so let's get to our hand count on...
Mr. Moderator, I'm sorry. Just before we vote, can I make just one statement, one discussion, please?
Sure.
It'll be very brief. So I just wanna make sure that before we have a vote, we have a sum of exactly what happened and kind of how we got here today, and I promise I'll make it brief. So just based off of some of the questions, I wanna make sure that we're all of the same understanding of what happened. So first, the select, the Board of Selectmen, we were looking at regionalizing the dispatch center, right? And we were looking to regionalize specifically in Tuxbury. And part of that process, what that means is, we as a board look at the pros and cons, right? And we weigh the benefits and the downfalls of our options, and we bring it to meeting, right? And that's what we did. We had a select board meeting where we brought that to the table, and we heard from dispatchers, and we heard from many of the police officers and other people who, who thankfully were there to have discussions with us on why they felt that that was a con. Based on the feedback and based on some of the discussions that we've had with those people, we then went and we said, okay, Tuxbury Regional Center dispatch is off the table. Maybe in the future, we'll look to see if there's a better fit, you know, than Tuxbury. Who knows, right? But at this point in time, there's no imminent decision. And that's where we, as a select board, left it. You're here today, hearing this issue, because this is a citizen's petition. So somebody, a concerned citizen, took it upon themselves to bring it here before you today with the intent being that after the vote today, there be no further discussion on whether or not regionalization anywhere could be a good possibility for Tingsboro. So when we vote, I want you to really understand what happened and why we're here today, and what the scope of a vote would mean, right? So the select board is not proposing that today, at this point in time, first and foremost, Tuxbury is off the table. Tuxbury regionalization is not something that is even going to be voted on. It's not an option for us for Tingsboro, right? There might be an option in the future, and if there is that option, right, the select board will then go back and speak with the dispatchers again, fire chief again, police chief again, all the concerned citizens again, before we even make any kind of decision, right? So today, there's nothing, as far as the select board goes, that we are proposing as a change. The reason that we're having this discussion is because there's a citizen petition who is asking you to vote that there be no regionalization whatsoever. So I just wanna make that clear. To you, Mr. ...
Thank you for that.
Very quickly. No, I'm...
More than one question!
Unfair. Just, just a moment. I'm just asking...
Give him, give him 30 seconds.
Can we please have a commitment from the select board to bring it back, if they decide to make a decision, to bring it back to, to the town meeting?
I don't think they can commit to that, but they've heard you. So, all right, let's vote on Article 3. We're gonna do a hand count. Where's my counters? I got two on the left, two on the right. So all those in favor of Article 3, raise your right hand or left hand with your orange card and keep it held up so that the counters can come down and count. And folks right in the middle here, so Sarah with the, is that Michigan? To the right. You go to the right. Sarah with the blue shirt. So if you can push to the right. There you go. Sarah, all the way in the back with the blue jacket, you come to the left. There you go. All right.[1451.65][1451.65](pause) You guys agree on the number?
37.
So left side, you can put them down. Right side, keep them up.[1516.11][1516.11](laughter) I'll turn around and, my right, your left. We're gonna raise our hands again. Same people. So a majority vote is required. That does not carry. The vote was 98 yes votes and 203 no votes. That does not carry. Article 4, to see if the town will vote to transfer the following amounts from free cash to the following accounts and/or for the following purposes.
I moved that the town withdraw Article 4 from the special town meeting warrant.
Hang on one second. Let me, I'm gonna, I'm gonna read the dollar amounts as part of the, the article.
Sure.
One moment, so fifty-two thousand five hundred to the other post-employment benefits trust fund, two hundred thousand dollars to the capital account, sixty thousand dollars to the public buildings general fund account fiscal year twenty-four, four hundred and fifty-five thousand eighteen dollars to the fiscal year twenty-four school department revenue, two hundred thousand to the capital asset stabilization fund, one hundred thousand to special ed stabilization fund, and fifty thousand dollars to the finance committee reserve fund or take any other action relative thereto. Do I have a motion on Article IV?
Mr. Moderator? I moved that the town withdraw Article IV from the special town meeting warrant.
Just read that. I have a motion to withdraw. Do I have a second?
Mr. Moderator, make a second on that.
Mr. Moderator, any explanation?
The town was unable to certify free cash in time for the meeting tonight. The challenge revolved around the proximity of closing our FY twenty-three financials and then having to turn around the documents for certification of free cash.
Okay, any questions about the withdrawal? So we have a motion to withdraw because the free cash could not be certified by Department of Revenue in time for tonight's meeting. All those in favor of the motion to withdraw Article IV signify by saying aye.
Aye!
All those opposed? The motion to withdraw does carry. Article V, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of one million twenty-five thousand one hundred and seventy dollars from the sewer enterprise fund retained earnings to the sewer enterprise fund for fiscal year twenty-four to be expended by the sewer commission as shown as Article XI of the May second, two thousand twenty-three annual town meeting or take any other action relative thereto. Do I have a motion on Article V?
Mr. Moderator, I vote that the town withdraw Article V from the special town meeting warrant.
Motion to withdraw. Do I have a second? Second? Motion and a second, any explanation?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. The town was unable to certify free cash in the time for meeting, for the meeting tonight. The challenge revoked revolves around the proximity of closing our fiscal twenty-three financials and then having to turn around the documents for certification of free cash. While the sewer enterprise fund retained earnings are in order, the Department of Revenue will not release certification on retained earnings until they are certified, until they also certify free cash.
Thank you. So some explanation as the last article. All those in favor of the motion to withdraw Article V signify by saying aye.
Aye!
Opposed? Motion to withdraw carries as well. Article VI, to see if the town will vote to appropriate or reserve from estimated annual revenues of the community preservation fund for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four the sum of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to fund the Winslow Road footbridge project or take any other action relative thereto. Do I have a motion on Article VI?
Mr. Moderator, I moved that the town votes to appropriate or reserve from estimated annual revenues of the community preservation fund for fiscal year twenty twenty-four the sum of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars as printed in Article VI of the special town meeting guidebook.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, explanation?
Mr. Moderator, this article would appropriate two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the community preservation fund for the purposes of supplementing existing funding for the town center footbridge project, which will see installation of a pedestrian bridge over the Flint Pond Dam between Winslow Road and Middlesex Road, an observation deck overlooking the dam and site improvements. The first round of funding for this project was approved by town, at town meeting at May annual. The original funding included a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant from the state and eighty thousand dollar earmark from the legislature and two hundred thousand dollars from Community Preservation Committee in May twenty twenty-three. The town has spent more than expected due to the proximity of a state-owned dam which required additional engineering work.
Thank you for the explanation. Any discussion on Article VI? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article VI signify by saying aye.
Aye!
Opposed? That carries unanimously. Article VII, to see if the town will vote to amend the town general bylaws, Article II, entitled Finance Committee, by adding the language in bold and striking the language with a strike through as shown in your town meeting guidebook or take any other action relative thereto. Do I have a motion on Article VII?
Mr. Moderator, I moved that the town vote to approve Article VII as printed in the special town meeting guidebook.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, explanation, please.
This article would amend the town's general bylaws regarding the elected finance committee by prohibiting a member of the finance committee from also serving on the select board, school committee, or Board of Library Trustees.
Thank you for that. Any further discussion on Article VII?
Billy Crawford, uncomfortably. As they know, I'm the reason this article is here tonight. I thought about this a long time, and it was very difficult for me to do it. This isn't about personalities, this is about the bylaws of Tingsboro. So I'm gonna read this. The select board was notified that two finance committee members were believed to be in non-compliance of Tingsboro bylaws. The select board consulted with town council, I understand, and then decided to produce special town meeting Article VII. Currently, one finance committee member is also seated on the historical commission, Board of Assessors. Another finance committee member is on conservation commission and community preservation committee. The community preservation committee is supposed to have one, the bylaw says, I'm reading it, there are one member of the finance committee. There are two finance committee members that are on the community preservation committee because the finance committee appointed someone to community preservation and a conservation commission appointed someone to community preservation. That's not supposed to happen. Currently, the finance committee is the official watchdog of the community. Conflicts or the appearance of conflict should be avoided. Included in the town finance committee or committee board or other than the capital asset management committee shall forthwith, reading the bylaw, shall forthwith upon qualifying for another committee or board cease to be a member of said committee. Our bylaw is saying, and you can ask the town council, and I think the town council said, you're not supposed to be on any other board-appointed or elected committee if you're on the finance committee. We have two that are not in compliance with our bylaw. So Article VII would create obvious even more conflicts because now you, they could potentially be on, you could have two or three of them on a, on a planning board. So if Article VII is approved, the finance committee could be on the planning board, the zoning board, the sewer commission, the Board of Assessors, the housing authority, and about a dozen other commissions or body, public bodies. And nobody knows what other committees that might, the select board might have to create in the future. Okay, the bylaw also says, "The finance committee shall consider all matters of business included within articles of any warrant for a town meeting and shall, shall after due consideration, report therein in print its recommendation as to the article." That's called the Finance Committee Guidebook. I got one in my hand. Oh, you probably have one too. Article VII would create obvious conflicts through many, many articles, especially at a town meeting. And even if they, even if they recuse themselves, we'd have to ask them, why'd you recuse yourself? Well, putting them in a bad position by even having, thinking of having, doing this to our bylaw. Okay, our select board member I heard at the meeting said, members could recuse themselves if there's an appearance of conflict. Okay, well, unfortunately, it put the finance committee in a bad position because even this, this article, Article VII, the two members of the finance committee that this affects voted in favor. So actually, they should have recused themselves, and instead, they voted on a bylaw that favors them. The Finance Committee Guidebook will never again be a trusted source if this, if this bylaw were to pass because you'd have so many conflicts, okay? So there's that, and then I did some research, okay? From Pepperell website, so everyone can look this up, go home and look at it. Pepperell website, "The finance committee shall consist of seven voters of the town appointed by the selectmen. Members shall serve without compensation and hold no other office elected or appointed within the town, excluding appointments to the capital, the capital asset management plan." That's Pepperell. Vouchable, there will be an advisory board consisting of six legal voters, each of whom shall be elected for a term of three years. No elective town officer or appointed official will be eligible or qualified to serve on said board. From the Drakett website, "A finance committee consisting of seven members appointed by the moderator as herein provided. There shall be at least one member from each precinct." I won't read that. "No elective or appointed town officer or town employee shall be eligible to serve on said committee." I had, I got about a half a dozen more, but I won't read you all of them. No, there's nobody in the Merrimack Valley that says this except one that might be kind of close. And that's Chelmsford. But they have, they have a charter, so they exclude many things that we can't do because they have a charter. So I called in a telephone conversation, Town Moderator John Curlin, and it's funny what his response was. "No finance committee members are allowed to be seated on community preservation committee." We have two, we're supposed to have one. Chelmsford doesn't let any of them, they only have the liaison. So this, this, if we're gonna change the finance committee bylaw, we certainly ought to have a review committee. There's so many different angles to this, this is incredible. One more final thing, this is like drop the mic. If the, if the town-elected Town Moderator were here today, I could say to him like I'm looking at you, you could also be a finance committee member if you vote for this bylaw. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. Any further discussion?
Mr. Moderator, if I may?
Mr. Elder?
So I definitely agree with Mr. Crawford in that he did bring this to our attention. The issue is a little bit more complex in that there's a conflict today with the finance bylaw and the CPC bylaw. So even though there's only supposed to be one finance committee, does, the finance committee bylaw does not allow people to be on any other board or committee with the exception of capital asset. As Mr. Crawford knows, when he was on the finance committee and chair of finance committee, there were committee members on the finance committee who served on other boards and committees. This is not something that just happened this year, it's not something that is new, it's been ongoing. We run into this with periodic bylaws, we have it in our zoning bylaws where there are conflicts. We create something new, it becomes a conflict with others. So with that, we did the select board, worked with council, and we drafted the current change that's there. And what we looked at was to say, look, which groups, which committees and boards deal with appropriations and budgets, the financial side of things? And that was the select board, the school committee, and the Board of Library Trustees because they have their own budgetary requests and impact. We looked at that because we also had to deal with the reality of, there are only so many volunteers. And the key there, they're volunteers amongst all the other boards and committees. The reality is, we have open positions, we don't fill all of them because we don't have enough people that are involved. And so with the limited boards, limited volunteers for our boards and committees, we thought this was a good compromise, and I still believe that this is a good compromise.
And Mr. Moderator, may I add some more commentary to that?
Go ahead.
So Mike Moran on the select board, I'm in my second year. Billy Crawford, I want to thank you so much for the service you've done for the town, the times you volunteered your time and all that. I spent nine years on school committee, and I took a year off and I ran for the select board. I'd like to see more people participate, right? I know I can see a few people in the audience, there's Rick Rowe, there's Ryan McMahon, there's maybe a few other people here that have participated in the politics of town, running for school board or school committee, running for select board. Participate is really what this is about. We have very few people who are actually participating. Mr. Mitchell, thank you so much for your service on school committee. Like, the idea is that we don't have enough people who are participating on these boards, so we do have conflicts of interest. So the reason why we're doing this is because we're trying to stymie a conflict of interest from the few people who actually participate, and we've run it through council. We'll run it up the flagpole, whatever, in the state. But the idea is that we want you to participate. That's all I'm gonna say. Thank you very much.
Mr. Moderator, I agree, we want everyone to participate. One of the things I didn't mention, I have a lot more, okay? But if you went to every one of those websites I described to you, every community has a laundry list of, we're not, we're not the only ones doing this. They have a laundry list of open positions, so that's really kind of a moot point. This isn't gonna solve that by changing the bylaw, okay? And of a committee that we're supposed to rely on in our guidebook. Okay, so I, please, that's, and the other issue, through the moderator, the community preservation committee has a load of money going through it. In 2023, it appropriated eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars at the annual town meeting. So we shouldn't have two of them on the CPC. If you're gonna add, talk about money, they ought to be added to that list, okay? And they have two and a half million dollars in reserves. So that's, that's, the reason, reason this did come up, and I didn't want to make it personal, is because of that reason, okay? It's a little, that should, this should not be happening. I'm flabbergasted that we'd even be thinking about doing this.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. Any further discussion on?
Mr. Moderator, just quickly. Mr. Moderator, just quickly. I am for this motion because I'm totally against kicking long-term members of this community off boards. We've had members here that have been seventeen, sometimes longer, they've been serving on multiple committees. They've been, you know, they don't get paid. To kick them off would be an injustice. I'm voting for this article. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article VII?
Yeah, John Murphy, I think we're losing the focus on what the bylaws are there in the first place for, which is to prevent the conflict of interest or appearance of conflict between these two boards, especially ones that have money flowing through them. And that's the whole reason we're doing this. So changing the bylaw to let people stay on the boards, I think is, is besides the point. I don't, I don't think we should be changing bylaws to affect who's currently sitting on a board where in the future, you're gonna have the same types of situations pulling forward. There are people that are interested in being on the finance committee if people want to recuse those seats. There are people that are interested in being on these boards. Getting rid of this, putting a bylaw in place to allow people that are currently sitting in conflict of those bylaws, I think is abhorrent. Thank you.
Thank you for that. I thought you dropped your mic already, Mr. Crawford.
I'm sorry, but we have another, another thing to, the gentleman just made that response. I made a very heartfelt email, they all know about the email, that I suggested to allow the current finance committee members to finish their term but promise not to go out for reelection. That's what I asked them to do in an email. They never responded to that. So I understand that. They've won the election and, and they were sworn in, let them serve it. But we should not continue this fallacy, this thing we're trying to do to protect one individual in town. So we made it personal, they did, not me, okay? Follow the bylaws of the town. So let them serve out their terms, but say they're not gonna serve again if they're gonna, gonna stay on the finance committee, they have to get rid of everything else. But you gotta do something about the CPC.
All right, thank you for that. Any further discussion on Article VII? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article VII, please signify by saying aye.
Aye!
Opposed?
No!
We're gonna go to a hand count on that one. That's a majority vote. My counters ready again? Let's keep that division down the center again if we could. Karen? Yep. So all those in favor, a yes vote for Article VII, a yes vote, please raise your orange card. Keep them up. Keep them up. I want you to keep your, make sure you keep them up. Some of you are letting them down a little bit, they can see it, but, so this side of the room, you can come down. Okay, yes votes have been counted, you can put them down. All those opposed to Article 7, no vote, please raise your orange card. Okay, votes are in, that does carry by a vote of 166 yes votes to 116 no votes, so that does carry. Moving on, Article 8. See if the town will vote to amend the town's general bylaws by adding the following new Article 53 entitled "Sealer of Ways and Measures Fees or Take Any Other Action Relative There Too." Do I have a motion on Article 8?
I move that the town vote to approve Article 8 as printed in the special town meeting guidebook.
Have a second?
Uh, second.
Motion and a second, any explanation?
This article would establish a fee structure for the Sealer of Ways and Measures program in Tingsborough. This program is a regional collaboration through the Northern Middlesex Council of Governments, NIMCOG, and ensures businesses with scales and other systems that measure quantities to determine fee are inspected and operating correctly.
Thank you for the explanation. Any discussion on Article 8? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 8 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries unanimously. Article 9, to see if the town will vote to approve payment on the following bills which were incurred during a previous fiscal year, 2023, or take any other action relative thereto. Vendor WB Mason, $32.89. WB Mason, $14.88. TPX Communications, $1,989.30. Sherburne Lumber, $154.27. And Arden Engineering, $277.50. Do I have a motion on Article 9?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve Article 9 as printed in the special town meeting guidebook.
Second.
Motion and a second, explanation?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. Bills that are paid outside of the fiscal year that they are generated require town meeting authorization. These bills will be paid out of the existing funds appropriated for FY24 and no additional funding, appropriation is required.
Thank you for that. Any discussion on Article 9? This requires our 9 tenths vote. All those in favor of Article 9 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That does carry unanimously. Thank you. This one's a bit long, and the motion that is going to be made requires, would require a repeat of the full language if I were to read it. I'm not going to read it all. The motion's going to add the specific dollar amount that's being approved. So, Article 10, do I have a motion on Article 10?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town increase the funding authorization previously approved in Article 28 of the May 3, 2022 annual town meeting by an additional $4,626,000 to bring the total authorization from $82,530,000 to $87,156,000 for the purpose of paying costs of the design, construction, equipping, and furnishing of a new middle school with an approximate area of 112,784 square feet located at 15 Narvis Road in Tingsborough, Massachusetts, inclusive of abatement and demolition of the existing middle school structures on said property, new parking lot, new softball field, and associated site preparation, and any and other, all other costs incidental or related thereto. Which school facility shall have an anticipated useful life as an educational facility for the instruction of schoolchildren for at least 50 years, and for which the town may be eligible for a grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA, set amount to be expended under the direction of the Tingsborough Middle School Building Committee. To meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Select Board, is authorized to borrow set amount under Mass. General Laws, Chapter 44, or pursuant to any other enabling authority. The town acknowledges that the MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA, and any project cost the town incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the town, provided further that any grant that the town may receive from the MSBA for the project shall not exceed the lesser of, one, 58 and 61 one-hundredths percent of eligible approved project costs as determined by the MSBA, or, two, the total maximum grant amount determined by the MSBA, and that the amount of borrowing authorized pursuant to this vote shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in the funding project agreement, sorry, the project funding agreement that may be executed between the town and the MSBA, and further that any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any premium apply to the payment of the cost of the issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing the amount of, to be borrowed to pay for such costs by a like amount.
Thank you. Do I have a motion on Article 10? Do I have a second?
Um, second.
Motion and a second. Any explanation?
Uh, Mr. Moderator, this article will amend the May 22, 2022 town meeting and town election vote that authorized a debt exclusion of $82,530,000 by increasing the authorization $4,626,000 to bring the total authorization to $87,156,000. The MSBA does not allow the dollar amount to be included in the warrant article language, but the motion made at town meeting will include the dollar amount. The Middle School Building Committee will present a budget that shows an anticipated combination of state relief and Mass. Safe Energy rebates that will cover the additional increase and result in no new tax increase. The MSBA, however, requires the town to have an authorization for the full project budget.
Thank you for that explanation. Any discussion on Article 10? School Committee has their presentation?
I promised to be brief, and I'm happy Mr. Schneider had to read that, not me. For those who don't know, my name is Mike Flanagan, I'm the proud superintendent of Tingsborough Public Schools. I've also been a Tingsborough public school employee for over 25 years, and my family's lived in this community for 20 years. Basically, what I'm going to do is really answer three questions. Why do we have an overage? What has the School Building Committee done to address that overage? And what's next? So we'll put out a 30,000-foot view with some slides just so we all understand how we got here. So here's the overage. This is the producer price index. This is the gold standard for school building construction costs. And we can see that in December of 2021, that's when our project budget was established, $82.5 million for the construction of the middle school. We can see the escalation that's happening at this point. Just five months later, as a community, we voted. 85% of the vote at town meeting supported this project. Two weeks later, it went on the ballot. 67% of this community supported this project in May of 2022. The escalation continued. This is why we have an overage. So the question becomes, what have we done as a School Building Committee to address this? In that time, we had 20 public meetings. The project team presented to the Select Board twice. The project team presented to the School Committee once. Throughout that time, we put out four bid packages, and we watched as the bids came in, and we were watching them earnestly and intently to keep our eye on the ball. Currently, we are 93% bought out in terms of goods and services at this time. 93% bought out. While this was going on, we also advocated with our state legislators. We reached out to our local associations and group, whether it was MMA, or NIMCOG, or the Superintendent Association, and we pleaded for more money. There are 30 projects now, currently, in the state that were impacted by that escalation. So we advocated for more money. Additionally, we looked internally. As a School Building Committee, we said, where, where can we make some adjustments here? Where can we make some reductions? And we went through four rounds of value engineering, and we reduced the project by $3.2 million. And we did that without impacting the educational program or offerings. September 22nd, Friday, September 22nd, that is when our last bid came in on the fourth bid package. And it was a big one. It was for electrical. And it came in at about $7.3 million, which was about $85,000 under what we had projected. So when that bid came in on September 22nd, we knew what our 93% buyout was at that point. So the project team met the following Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. They went through all the numbers with a fine-tooth comb. They looked at our, our reserves, they looked at our contingency, they looked at guaranteed maximum price. And we had a School Building Committee meeting that Wednesday night, September 27th. And at that meeting, the project team recommended that if we used $393,000 of our contingency money, we can deliver the school that this community supported in May of 22 with no additional tax impact to the residents. It was an absolute no-brainer. The softball field was in, the canopy was in, everything that we were nervous about not being able to provide is in this project. All we had to do was dip into our contingency by $393,000. At this time, they also said, by doing this, we'll still have $3.3 million in contingency, which is over 5%, which is appropriate for where we are at this point in the project. It was an absolute no-brainer. So the School Building Committee overwhelmingly supported it, brought it to the Selectman the following Monday night, October 2nd, and made the recommendation to the Select Board. And at that meeting, Select Board asked some great questions, and they unanimously supported. So that's where we are at this time. How do we get no additional tax impact? Let's look at the numbers. This is the 4.626 that we're looking at of. The project in May 22, $82.5 million, as we stand now, $87.1. So we have a $4.6 million delta that needs to be addressed. MSBA grant, $28 million then, $28 million now. Tingsborough taxpayer impact, $54.5 then, $54.5 now. Where's the difference come in? Right here's the big part. We talked about that advocacy. We talked about going to our legislators. Senator Kenny, Representative Gary, Senator Kerry was actually one of the catalysts behind this bill. And essentially, two levers were put for the MSBA. One, an additional $100 million in funding went into the FY24 budget. And two, the legislature said that the MSBA can increase their borrowing capacity. So the MSBA now has $246 million to address the escalation for those 30 projects. Of that 246, 4.1, or the bulk of that delta, our delta, is coming to us. Where's the other 500 come from? Historically, when you received third-party funding from the MSBA, it came off of their reimbursement. Well, they changed that language in June because they saw what was going on with all these projects. And they said, if you receive any type of reimbursement or third-party funding, whether it's a state or federal grant, that goes in addition to the MSBA grant. That 500,000 right there with the 4, with the 4.1 brings us to the delta that we needed to address. So all that being said, our original state reimbursement was going to be about $28 million, it's now going to be $32.6 million. These are the numbers. So you're asking, why are we here? And it was buried into that language. But part of the mechanism with the MSBA is a community has to authorize borrowing, borrowing, excuse me, up to the full project cost. Well, the project costs went up by 4.6 million dollars. So all we're asking to do is approve or authorize borrowing up to that number regardless of whether or not we actually borrow that full amount. We need authorization because that's part of the legality and the mechanism with the MSBA. That's why we're here. That's why we're here tonight. So we have two options. We can vote no. And if we vote no, the project will most likely go into moratorium. The trades that are on site will demobilize. We will be at risk of being in breach of our original funding agreement with the MSBA at $28 million, 7.2 of which we've already received as a community. And if we fall out of the MSBA pipeline, we'll be on... We'll be responsible for paying back that 7.2 million, most likely. Additionally, that 4.1, one-time relief, that will be distributed, most likely, to the 29 of the projects that are in the pipeline that approve it. So that's what happens with a no vote. A yes vote? We continue the project on time with no additional tax impact to the taxpayers. It's that simple. I have the entire project team here tonight. We're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Flanagan. Any further discussion? Article 10.
Billy Crawford, 83 Frost Road. The question I... More of a clarification. We're showing the $3.3 million contingency. I'd just like someone to explain that. That money is likely going to be used also as a project moves along. Is that not correct? So people don't think that we might actually have some money at the end of this.
Sure, come on. I've just identified who you are for the crowd.
David Sandin, project executive with Left Field, owner's project manager. Mr. Crawford is correct. With the passage of this article, we will have $3.3 million of contingency, and some of that will be used just during the course of construction for unforeseen conditions that happens on every construction project.
Thank you for that. Any further discussion on Article 10?
John Ruffey, again. I think this sounds great with the fact that it says no new taxes in here on the presentation. My concern is that the whole reason for these project increases we brought up when we were against the project last year. We knew that the state of the economy was bad. We knew that the political landscape of the country was horrible, and all those things proved to be why those costs kept going up. None of that has changed. So the fact is, right now, we have... We're an expectation of the $33 million or so that's anticipated to be given to us. I wish that that was a guarantee and not an anticipated, because what we're doing here is we're really on the hook now. As a town, we're guaranteeing the $87 million with no guarantee of any of the other funds that are going to come in. So if something does change and we don't get that full 34, we're on the hook, and we will have to pay extra taxes. So I guess I have a question about that now with where it says no new taxes here and there's a $4.1 million increase. Will this override... My understanding is this will not require an override to tax Prop. 2.5 because you can reduce those anticipated funds from what you're going to put in there. And that's my concern, is this is kind of a back-end way in that if those circumstances change, we'd already have committed ourselves to the $87 million without having to go through the three-quarter vote here and to the town meeting, sorry, the general election, like we would for any other Prop. 2.5 override. So that's my question and concern. And it's the only one I really have about this, because it sounds great, and you've done great work with getting the project to be kind of a net even now. But there is that risk of not getting all the anticipated funds that are listed on the board.
All right, thank you. Somebody want to address the funding from the state side?
Sure. It's my understanding that once you sign the project funding agreement with the MSBA, that money is already in their coffers, and that money is guaranteed to the community. So once we get authorization, get it up to full project cost, once we sign that PFA with the MSBA, that money will be guaranteed. So that 33, so it won't get to 87 ever, because that 32, once we sign it, will be guaranteed.
Thank you. Further discussion on Article 10?
Debbie Wood, 44 Davis Street. In regards to anticipated money, according to the presentation, we can guarantee, if we vote no, that we will be on the hook for 7.2 million, and we can guarantee that we would be in breach of contract.
Well done. Any further discussion on Article 10? Okay, we'll move this to a vote. This does require a two-thirds majority. We'll try a voice vote, but most likely hand count. We'll take a shot at it. All those in favor of Article 10, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'm going to call that as a two-thirds voice vote. That does carry. Have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, folks, for coming out. Have a good evening.